Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. We're gonna start with the pledge allegiance and the national anthem. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Here.
Member Biancheria?
Here.
Member Benanda?
Here.
Member Guardiola?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member Roy?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here.
Alright, we're gonna go to the consent agenda, but with the consent agenda, motion to suspend the rules, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, yes.
So, motion to move the donation of $500,000 from the Gene Haas Foundation from the consent agenda to finance, roll call. To grants and other finances, I'm sorry, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
So, we are now on, so consent agenda to approve, anyone have any questions on anything else on the consent agenda? No, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
So, we would move on to public comment, and any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before them for two minutes, those speaking will state their name, their city, their residence, and the item on which they wish to speak. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Deena Tedeschi, I'm a Worcester resident and also a Worcester Public School parent of a graduate and soon to be eighth grader. First, I'd like to take a moment to welcome and thank Mr. Allen and his wonderful team for their continued commitment to scholars, families, and caregivers, and the strategic plan. A great appreciation also for the continuation of the superintendent's roundtable, which is an incredibly important connection and opportunity for all who participate. I was glad to see agenda items focus on grants and funding for after-school programs, improvements, plus critical education regarding the history of genocide. We know this kind of grant work is hard, and I want to say thank you. I'd like to comment on GB 582, I want to strongly urge the school committee in the district to input, to seek input in multiple ways from parents and caregivers, and especially scholars. In my opinion, there are a number of flaws in the well-intentioned state legislation, and I think as the second-largest school district in Massachusetts, we should really take time to do this correctly, so there's real buy-in on the policy. If it's referred to FOG, I would encourage scholar, educator, and caregiver presentations on what they believe will be the best decisions for this policy, as they will be the ones to live it and manage it, manage the hour-to-hour struggle during the school day. My daughter had many constructive thoughts on this potential change and the pluses and pitfalls, and I'll share her written comments via email with the clerk, so she can share it with all the school committee members. One important point she mentioned to me included how during the day, staying after school for clubs or subject to support with a teacher may not be known in advance, especially for students that don't take school buses and are picked up by caregivers, and how if scholars called from the office, which is another challenge, we cannot presume a caregiver will get the message in a timely fashion and cannot come up with a quality plan. And I don't know about everyone else, but sometimes the after-school club and sport practice schedule changes about 12 times before the kids have had lunch, so how can we make this policy functional and safe by asking caregivers and scholars? And one last comment on GB 5-88, or rather, request, it references regarding pronouns for his/her, and if they can be more inclusive, and to be adjusted accordingly, as well as change workers' workmen's compensation to workers' compensation in the policy proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and city residence.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Andrea Peak, and I'm a lifelong Worcester resident, and my daughter is going into the fourth grade in the fall. First, welcome Superintendent Allen, this is my first time seeing you speak, and I'm excited to hear your report today. I brought you a welcome gift, it says, "Being a superintendent is easy, it's like riding a bike, except the bike is on fire, you are on fire, everything's on fire." So, I'm sure you will get to have this and use it, put it to good use, so welcome. Okay. The next thing I wanted to speak on was GB 5-70, the high school mastery grading proposal. I think that the mastery grading is a step in the right direction for clarity and fairness, however, I want to keep all of our students in mind. This is sad, this is my daughter's report card, and she's on an IEP, and when you look at this page, she is going into fourth grade, all you see is below, below, not yet, below, below, not yet. This does not represent my daughter's abilities at all. She can tell you exactly how a CAT scan works, she can make professional clowns at Boston Children Hospital laugh till they can't breathe, she vaults on a horse, she is intelligent, she is courageous, but nothing is shown on this piece of paper right here, it's invisible. The next thing I wanted to quickly mention is I did look for Mr. Johnson's agenda number, forgive me, ROS 5-6D, the report on the DUCI special education, and I found it, it was so tiny, and there were so many wonderful things to celebrate on this paper, and as a member of CPAC, I feel like, you know, we should, we should, this should be more, more, front and center. Special education is not just a special education parent topic, it's for everyone. Every student in our city should feel like they belong. Superintendent Allen, welcome, I hope with your leadership, we will not only address our challenges, but also shine a light on the winds for all of our students. Thank you. Oh, the cellphone, I am a Worcester Public Schools substitute teacher, that's all I'm gonna say about that, walking into the classroom with the cellphones, that's a fun one, so thank you. Yep, good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, my name is Tracy O'Connell-Novick, I live at 135 Willian Street here in Worcester. I'm here to speak to the item that you just moved into the grant section. I'm here, I stress in my personal capacity rather than a professional one, and I'm here because I'm furious that a man worth $250 million is taking advantage of the underfunding of public schools to clean up his public profile. Gene Haas has, as a reminder, paid $8.9 million to settle a federal patent infringement lawsuit against a rival firm. Because he blamed the federal judge for the fine, he created a tax fraud scheme that defrauded the federal government of nearly $20 million, in addition to intimidating witnesses and a federal agent investigating the case. He was convicted of this conspiracy in federal court in 2008. He paid $70 million in restitution, plus a $5 million fine, and he served two years in federal prison. This is the man who, in order for you to get half a million dollars in funding, is requiring that you put his name on one of our school buildings. Let us be under no illusions, this is not about Mr. Haas being generous, if it were, he could make the donation without strings. He wants his name on the building, both to clean up his profile and to advertise the next generation of consumers. Please don't be distracted by the following arguments, which you will no doubt hear, that this is needed. Yes, it is. Remarkably, Mr. Haas is not the only person who has half a million dollars. He has quote, "served his time." Sure. He has also a record that does not allow him to, for example, attend his own Formula One racing team's races abroad, and one which would also bar him from volunteering in our schools. If the committee wishes to work on issues of criminal justice reform, wonderful. That should start with our students and their families, rather than a wealthy white businessman from California whose main interest in our schools is in positive press. I would ask that you refuse this effort of whitewashing, and I commit to coming before you every time this comes up, should it continue to be necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Heather Stanek, I'm a lifelong resident of Worcester. I have a rising sixth grader and a son who's going into kindergarten. I would just like to say, welcome to Superintendent Allen, we're really glad to have you, really glad that you're continuing the efforts that prior Superintendent Monares started with community input and the roundtables and meeting with all of the community organizations. We were so happy to see you last Monday at Gates Lane School, and look forward to working with you in the future. I would also like to speak on the cellphone policy, and further encourage that if it does go to FOG, that there is more than one opportunity for community input, particularly with scholars, educators, and caregivers, caregivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one on line, right? So, we will close that portion of the meeting, and we will move on. Going to take out of order, we're gonna go to Al, reporter to standing committee to review and approve high school mastery-based grading practices, Member McCullough?
Thank you. So, we had a second meeting in FOG around the mastery-based school grading practices. After Dr. Gagnas provided additional information and more questions that had been brought up by members were answered, there was a vote of four to zero, and the motion was to approve the grading practices, and through the chair, well, he's not listening. I'm gonna make a motion on this, that I wanted to add two motions. The first motion is, in reference to Member Biancheria had requested at one point to review the D grade of 65 to 69, be 60 to 69 consistent with our other tiers. I also explored districts around the state, as well as colleges, who all considered D to be a 60 to 69, not a 65 to a 69, and this was something that was set under school committee policy years ago, so that does need to be changed by us. The other motion I had was, you know, we talked a lot about the importance of this with competency determinations, with DESE's requirements regarding our competency determinations, as well as the fact that we don't have a grading policy, and that needs to be part of the competency determination requirement, that we do move forward with this, but I ask that this be sent back to administration, for them to work with the AW on around any impact bargaining that this policy may have, and come back to us for the first meeting in September with those discussion findings. So, those are the motions that I would be adding on to this, through the chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Member Mailman?
Through the chair, do I understand too that the EAW did ask to meet on this item? Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you. Is there any, I watched the meetings, the prior meetings about this subject on the FOG meeting, and I don't recall, and maybe the question was asked, but what is the feedback from the vocational trades, what's the impact to those programs? Through the chair.
Superintendent?
Through the chair, Mr. Foley will address that question.
Mr. Foley?
Thank you, through the chair. So, the policy would apply to all of the courses we teach, whether it was vocational courses or regular general education courses.
Okay. What different feedback through the chair did you perhaps hear about, or concerns with grading? I mean, obviously, it's a competency-based, you know, pass or fail anyways on the vocational side, so...
Through the chair, we haven't gotten specific concerns relative to higher education.
And through the chair, are we, actually, maybe this will be answered if it goes through the AW, but do we actually have a document that we're approving through the chair? Is the language...
Through the chair, yes, there's a, there's a document, it's the policy that you're approving.
Yeah, I mean, I saw the presentation, I just don't recall seeing, like, here's, and the policy is going to be through the chair for, we're starting with high schools, and then we're gonna go to middle schools, and it will never be under middle school? Through the chair, is that correct?
Through the chair, we're starting with high schools, and we're gonna see how it goes with high schools, ideally, we would move it down to the middle schools, but we're gonna start with the high schools, and get it flushed out at the high school level first.
Okay. And so, through the chair, I would just make a motion that when it comes back from all the next meetings that we're gonna have, that we actually see the language. I don't think it was part of what we had seen already, through the chair.
Through the chair, to Member Mailman's point, I believe that administration will have that, a written policy for us to review when this comes back, after they've done the impact bargaining conversation.
And my last comment, like, why don't we just call it competency-based grading? Why do we, I mean, that's what we're after, and that's what the state ultimately is looking, I mean, it's not a particular program, right, that we're choosing here, it's what we preferred to name it? Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. We're establishing a policy that we've never had before, for grading policy, so, we can...
Fair. I guess I was just thinking that, to me, the competent, I mean, I'm in favor of this work, and the fact that it's competency-based is, like, I think where it's at right now, so, I'm in favor of that, I just think it's, makes it seem more complicated. Not that you educators like to do that, but to call it mastery, blah, 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 so, just a thought, thank you.
Member Benanda?
Thank you. Through the chair, so, I've been doing a lot of reading on this, I found it interesting that standard-based grading, and books about standard-based grading, and standard-based curriculum, and standard-based assessment, really started in the 70s, there were books written about that, only a few, but from '22 to '24, there've been 25 books written on that, so, of course, I did not read all 25 books, but I, you know, looked for reviews of the whole thing about standard-based grading. The questions that linger with me is that, I know we have standard-based curriculum now, staff are required, we'll stay with the high schools, because that's where we're gonna start with it, to do lesson plans that are based on the standards, which is great. The next part about standard-based assessment, though, I don't believe we've done a lot of work on standard-based assessment, we certainly have done some. So, if we're gonna move to standard-based grading without standard-based assessment really understood by all the teachers, I wonder if that is gonna be, like, a problem that we'll have to solve. So, I wonder about that. I also looked that Canada has been doing standard-based grading for 20 years now, and what they, what they do, I actually looked at the report card for Ontario, Canada, they have a report card, you can go right online and look at it, and some of the things that we were talking about, so, standard-based grading, do you include homework in it? Do you include class participation in it? Do you include attendance in it? And in Ontario, their report card, standard-based grading, just has the grade for the assessment on curriculum, and what standards the students are able to achieve. Then, there's a separate grade for homework, a separate grade for class participation, and a separate grade for attendance. And the homework, the report card is interesting, not that we would want to copy this, but Thomas Grusky, who is a well-known researcher in this area, and they did this in the state of Kentucky, they put, they copied the Ontario report card, and they put pictures of each of the staff members on the grade, so, in other words, it was more personal. And what they did is, for the high school, they, for the first two terms, they sent the regular report card home, and then they sent the new report card home, and they asked parents and teachers after two terms, what did you like better? And 100% of the staff and parents agreed that they liked the standard-based report card. So, you know, I think the, how we, how we start this, and how people become aware of it, we need to do a little bit more work on it. I was surprised not to hear about it until we, we saw that on the agenda, I know that it wasn't mentioned in a report to Superintendent months ago, but for the most part, I had not heard about it until I saw the item on the agenda, so I think we need a little more time to think about this. I think one of the biggest parts is, it would be accepted if teachers consider that this is part of their process and their procedures for grading, and it actually shows growth. And if it does do that, then teachers will accept it. So, I just wanna say that we need a little bit more time to think about this. One of the things that I hear from staff, they're concerned about, which we have always done, by the way, is give multiple opportunities for students to pass in work to help bring up their grade. So, teachers are a little concerned about, well, how many are multiple opportunities, and also, will they have time to be doing all this correcting? And the final part is, what are the interventions gonna be? So, for example, interested in seeing what happens to our ninth graders this year, because I don't believe we did summer school this year for middle schoolers, and we had always done that, and that helped them get over, you know, some of the difficulty they were having in the middle school, so now, we have ninth graders coming in, and we're gonna start a new grading system, as well as, have we really sufficiently trained staff on the assessment? So, that's just my concern, I think it's good that, it goes back to administration for them also looking at this information. The last point is the 40, the grade of 40. I know if the subcommittee talked about, well, it doesn't really have to be that way, teachers can decide if they want to use the 40 grade or use the zero grade, but on the written document, it doesn't say that, so, are we going to rewrite that? How is that gonna be seen?
Thank you.
Through the chair, I can address that piece, Member Benanda, so, on the slides that we provided in the backup, it does say that the, a grade of 40 is assigned for a student that has at least attempted some work, but has not met mastery. A grade of zero can be assigned for a student that's done no work and has not attended, so we haven't taken the zero away. And, just a point, 40 is still an F.
Yes. And I understand that, we all know that you can recover from a 40 quicker than you recover from a zero, right? But it has also been the practice, and I'm not sure at all schools, but in some schools, that a teacher can decide to drop a quarter grade, if there was something was happening in the student's life, and that zero would cause the student to fail, they can then add the three other quarters, and that student does have a better opportunity of passing that class.
So, through the chair, that's true, and certainly, you know, in my tenure as a high school principal, 15 years, would encourage folks to do that, but it's been practice, not policy. So, not everyone did do that, and not every student got that same opportunity in every classroom, so, this, by, having this as policy, it will give kids that equal opportunity across classrooms and across schools. That's the intent.
So, through the chair, would we still be saying that we wanted to keep that too, and add that policy, or the policy would be the 40 or the zero?
As written, the policy would be the 40.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Member Mailman?
I'm sorry, one last question. I was interested in, thank you for providing the towns that were already using the system, and I think Boston is using this competency-based method, but other than that, they were very wealthy towns, and I'm curious why, if anybody, if you had any discussion about, I love that we'll be the first, but, like, does that raise any flags for everybody else that it's gonna be more difficult? So, why would those towns that have a lot more resources be, was there any discussion about that?
So, through the chair, I don't necessarily think that that was a point of discussion, but I think what this policy does is, it creates a level playing field for all the kids, so...
I got it.
What the wealthy towns have done as opposed to what Boston does, you know, for us, it's about equity.
Yeah. It's just interesting to me that all the towns that did do it were the wealthy towns, so thank you for that response.
All set? Anyone else? No? Okay. So, we have two motions here, the motion is to update the grading thing from six, for D 60 to 69, am I correct? And then, the second motion is to, is it to approve this pending administration coming back on any bargaining impact that it may have, when they discuss it with the union at our first September meeting? Is that correct? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Clarification, we're approving it today? Or wouldn't we just vote it, wouldn't...
Through the chair, we can do it either, we could, through the chair, sorry, we can do that either way, I mean, I put the motion out there to approve pending the impact bargaining, so that the work continues for the beginning of the year, and it's ready for any PD that's going on, so that it doesn't stall that further, but I would defer through the chair to the superintendent if there, you know, what the impact would be about adjusting it to not voting today.
So, through the chair, I think we've heard the input a number of times, including tonight, feedback from the school committee, so what we'll do is make the changes that we heard tonight, incorporate that into an actual policy document, and impact bargaining with the EAW in the meantime, and bring back a completed document in September.
Yeah, I'd like to see the document before I would vote that. Thank you.
Member Benanda?
Could I also add to that motion that we do get more information about the... Could I also add to that motion that, um, we do get more information about the rollout and, um, what is being done, um, with assessments as far as assessment for teachers? You can't do, um, evidence-based grading or standards-based grading unless you're also using assessments that are showing that, um, you're assessing the curriculum and the standards. So could I add that we also, we see that information from administration prior to the vote of the document at the next meeting?
So you'd be asking for that to come back as well at the, at the next meeting along with everything else, correct?
Or on a Friday letter or, uh, even on a-
I, I, I think it would be best to come back altogether with everything as a package instead of separate.
Okay, thank you.
So- So we holding this until the, so the motion is to hold?
Yeah. To amend my motion, yes.
To amend the motion to hold this and come back at the first September meeting with all, um, the information on the motions. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Okay. So, we're going to move on to, we're going to take it out of order. We're going to go to N, we're going to go to approval grants and finance items. Any questions? Member McCullough?
Depending on the vote on this, I would, I would also make a motion that it is, if it is approved, that it has to go through the naming process, so to FOG for the naming process. For that, sorry, for a particular, sorry, I apologize, Chair. I was immediately jumping to the HOS grant. So I would say under the grants, the HOS grant, I would ask that that, if it does get approved, that it has to go through the naming policy process as well.
Okay. Member Mailman?
Thank you. I think we have some, um, folks from the school, and I'd actually really like to hear what they have to say about the grant, um, if we could listen to that tonight.
So, uh, tonight, Principal Waymouth and, uh, the instructor of the program, Brian Cummings, are here to, uh, give you an overview of the work. Um, I'm sure they're include, uh, both the previous donation that we've received and including the work that will be done with this donation.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you for having us through the chair and, uh, Chair, uh-
Member-
School, Member Mailman, thank you. Um, was there a specific question that you had or just like a statement?
I have questions, I guess my questions, um, in terms of, a lot of it is about the naming policy. And if we have had discussions with the school community and is the school community in favor, I, last, when we talked about the naming policy last year, I do think it's critically important that the school has something to say about this. And it was voted down that we don't have to do that. But, um, I, my preference is always to hear from the school community, um, and I think I had made that motion last time. So, I, we have advisory committees, um, has there been discussion about the importance of this equipment? About the long sta-, anything you want to say. I, I want you to tell us why you want us to take the donation and, and the naming as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let Mr. Cummings address that initially and fill in with anything else that I have.
Good evening, through the chair. My name is Brian Cummings, Department Head of the Advanced Manufacturing Program. I'm honored to be here tonight to talk about the offering from the Jean Haas Foundation to Worcester Technical High School, as this has been a long-time partnership, um, long before, um, any of us have been here. Two thousand and one is when we bought our first HOS machine, and the Jean Haas Foundation has been in place since nineteen ninety-nine. My goal, our goal was to inform school committee about this grant opportunity, to offer the details about the proposal and answer any questions that you may have, uh, to highlight the financial benefits this grant will provide, um, and to seek the committee's acceptance of the grant and approval of the proposal. Little bit about the Jean Haas Foundation mission. As I said, it was established in nineteen ninety-nine. The foundation is dedicated to promoting and supporting manufacturing and CNC education. They provide scholarship grants to schools for CNC programs in schools and colleges. They provide funding support for Skills USA and First Robotics competitions. They are gold sponsors of both organizations. They provide funding for teacher training programs throughout the nation, and they support an educational network to provide, provide professional development, teacher training, collaboration known as the HOS Technical Education Community or H-Tech. You'll find H-Tech, um, signage in all of our vocational schools with HOS equipment. So, just want to make that point. And, um, they provide grants to schools for expanding and upgrading training facilities, leading to the designation of the Jean Haas Centers and Labs. Annual scholarship grants to Worcester Technical High School since two thousand and fifteen have been a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh, this has gone to help, um, support students, the program supplies, to help with industry-recognized credentials, uh, meeting the standards, and making sure that we have the most advanced and up-to-date tooling, uh, and equipment. Uh, Worcester Tech currently has eight HOS CNC machine tools dated back to two thousand, uh, two thousand and one, I apologize, and most recent addition in two thousand and twenty-one where we added two additional. The program proposal that we, um, developed was an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar kind of renewal program, um, of which three-hundred-and-fifty thousand is in private funding and five-hundred thousand from the Jean Haas Foundation. Um, they have been a staunch supporter for Worcester Tech and many other schools, um, many local, uh, to name a few. Bay Path, Blackstone, um, Monty Tech, um, and Neshoba, many others. So, um, so there's twenty-four that I have on the list, plus several colleges as well. Um, we would not be the first-named school. Um, there, there are many post-secondary schools with the HOS naming rights, and we would be, I believe, the seventh high school to, um, to receive this. And we also received the largest, um, grant out of all the high schools so far.
Can I just jump in? So this, this is a eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project proposal. This, uh, half-a-million-dollar donation from Jean Haas that comes with naming rights would complete the project vision, which would bring our advanced manufacturing shop from, uh, more of an industrial age into a laboratory age and upgrade all of our equipment to be state-of-the-art. Um, it'll be a, a lab that is more advanced than any other, uh, high school lab according to the HOS Foundation, any other high school lab in the, uh, country, and will put our kids in the cutting edge of current equipment and technology. And so that's why we propose that. It has been a discussion for many years now at the general advisory, at the program advisory board. We do have a letter of support that we were not able to obtain in advance to submit as, uh, backup, but we do have a letter of support from the program council.
Last question, would there be a way that we could, um, have the school community to the superintendent, I guess, um, through the chair, um, weigh in so that we are actually accomplishing what I wish our policy would say?
Through the chair, the, the motion made by Member McCullough will be to refer this, uh, to the naming rights policy, which does include the superintendent, Desingney, the executive director of the quadrant, the principal, and members of the school committee.
So we'll have a naming-
We will do that-
Great.
Um, and follow the school committee recently approved policy.
Thank you.
Member Biancaria?
If I recall, it's been a number of years, as you stated, that, um, this has been evolving. And when, when we look at manufacturing, from what it was twenty-five, thirty years ago up to today, obviously, it's extremely different than what our grandparents worked in manufacturing and so on, of what it is today. To update this at a half-a-million and provide these funds for us to get to the part of what we need to say, and that is, it's a career that you would want your child in. It's not a career their grandparents were in. It's a career that you would like to see your child pursue. Um, whether or not they want to have an interest in going to college is irrelevant. It is something that they are able to also become employed in our city, because we do have manufacturing in the city of Worcester. They are looking for people who are knowledgeable enough to be able to work in that environment. And at times, they are scheduling twenty-four-seven shifts to enable us to continue in business. So this is, should not be looked at lightly as far as the advantage in the progress we are making towards the direction of not only setting career paths for our students, we're giving additional opportunities. This will enable us to take more students into the classroom in that particular area also. Am I correct on all of this?
Thank you.
Certainly.
Can I, through the chair, can I respond?
Yep.
Thank you so much for those comments. I agree with all of it. And I'd like to call out specifically that manufacturing is in our local blueprint for labor force needs. And I think, don't quote me on this one, some don't have it in front of me, but I think the median wage in advanced manufacturing locally is seventy-four thousand dollars, which to your point is a career.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All set? So the motion is to send this back to FOG and approve, tentatively, I guess, approve the grant pending the, following the naming policy in FOG. If that gets approved, brought back to the full committee, we will move forward. Correct? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Uh, hold on. Member Mailman?
It's kind of the same question as last time. We're doing a pre-approval? Is that what?
That was the motion.
Okay.
As, as far as I recall, that's the motion.
Okay, I would, should I? I would think we would be, it would come back from FOG and then we would approve something.
The motion is to approve this grant pending that it goes, it has to go to FOG for the naming, to follow the policy for, for naming. Once that is approved and that comes back to the full committee, we approve the naming portion of it, but we would have approved the grant is what the motion, how I take the motion, unless Member McCullough wanted to clarify that I'm, I'm not taking this right.
Through the chair, no, I, I'll keep it the way it is.
That's, that's how it is, am I correct? That's-
Through the chair, ma'am. Um, I just want to make sure I have your motion correct. I have that, uh, Member McCullough made a motion, should this grant be approved, that the naming portion will be pending the completion of the naming policy process in FOG.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So-
Through the chair, so basically you're voting on the approval, and if it gets approved, then it has to go to FOG for the naming policy.
Last question, through the chair. Do we approve all donations that go to WEDF? I mean, yes, that's my question.
Through the chair, so the distinction in this case is there's a naming rights component attached to it, which the school committee has direct purview over. Um, the, so this is not because the cash donation is going, or the grant is going to skyline. That's not the purpose of the acceptance at this point. It's because the naming right is completely under the purview of the school committee. It's because of that condition of the grant.
Okay, so we're only, we're approving the, okay. So we're approving the condition of the grant-
Because you're doing the naming rights though, you're accepting the funds-
Okay.
Through the skyline to fund the project.
I'm in favor of moving forward on this. I just feel like this is kind of out of order, because we're going to have to vote it again, but, okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Right there, okay. Thank you. So we are now going to go back to K, the report of the superintendent, R S, ROS five eleven. We'll be taking this with GB five seventy, um, item from Member McCullough to request a report from the administration on the progress made toward the superintendent's goal for the current academic year, discuss and reflect on the progress made, and provide, provide feedback to inform the development of goals and objectives for incoming Superintendent Allen. Superintendent?
Thank you, uh, and through the chair. The administration is pleased to present the report of the superintendent on progress made on the twenty-two-four, twenty-five goals of, uh, the superintendent. Specifically, you will hear an update on the progress towards each superintendent goal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, learn about key actions, milestones, and supporting data, and hear a high-level overview of the superintendent's entry plan for the start of the school year. The four goals from last year, which we'll get into, uh, cover in more detail later. Um, the district improvement, first goal is based on strategic plans, key priority, acquire and retain talent. The district improvement, second goal is based on the strategic plan's key priority, modernize and save facilities. The student learning goal is based on the strategic plan's key priority on equitable resources and education programs. And then the professional learning goal is also based on the strategic plan's key priority of equitable resources and educational, uh, programs. District improvement goal one is acquire and retain talent. The goal ensures a district, uh, system for recruitment, hiring, retention of talented, culturally and linguistically competent workforce through a cultural belonging and an authentic engagement. The work evidence from last year includes a comprehensive induction mo-, model for onboarding, creation of WPS new staff affinity groups, and a formalized pipeline and growth roadmap. To measure this work using the key performance indicators from the strategic plan, the first one, KPI one point one, increased percentage of new instructional staff from underrepresented backgrounds. We remain at twenty-nine point three percent for school year twenty-four, twenty-five as compared to the previous year. The second KPI, to increase the percentage of new operational, non-instructional staff from underrepresented backgrounds. We remain high at sixty-four point three percent, but less than the percentage in the prior year. The third KPI, two point two, is to increase the percentage of instructional staff retained from year to year. We saw a slight improvement over the prior year to ninety-four point five percent. And the fourth KPI, two point three percent is, uh, two point three is to increase the percent of operational, non-instructional staff retained from year to year. Again, we remain high at ninety-one point eight percent, but slightly less than the percentage from the previous year. District improvement goal number two, modernize and save facilities. The goal is to scale and implement facility improvements to include safety protocols, procedures, monitoring, and allocation of necessary fiscal resources through an equity lens. The product evidence was to codify an equity budget process. While we were able to accomplish this product last year, we were unable to fund to the extent that we need to. Regarding the measures of modernized and safe facilities, priority of the strategic plan, we used the following KPI measures. The first KPI, one point one, ensure maintenance and operation costs to the foundation budget allocation. We spent almost eighty-two percent of the foundation budget amount at the end of school year twenty-four, which is less than the spending as a percent of the foundation from the prior year, but well above the amount prior to the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. The second KPI, one point two, increase level of funding for facilities improvements from local, state, and federal resources. We are seeing an increase of four point five million dollars from the remaining federal sources for work to upgrade several schools this year. The third KPI, five point two, we've actually changed this KPI to improve work order response time, uh, which was, uh, previously the, uh, percentage of expedited, expedited repairs. We're changing it to the percent of expedited repairs completed within seventy-two hours. Previously, the measure was just a response time within seventy-two hours. So we've actually tightened this measure to track emergency repair completion, um, within the seventy-two hours. You can see that sixty percent of all emergency repairs were completed in the seventy-two hour, uh, this past year. And then finally, uh, KPI five point three is, uh, to improve worker, work order completion, the average number of days to complete the expedited repairs. Through the new work order management system and the work of the facilities department, the average days for completion have improved from twenty-two days to four days last year. Student, uh, student learning goal, using the strategic plan, key priority, equitable resources and educational programs. The goal is to lead the WPS learning community to define, refine, implement, and monitor culturally responsive policies and practices that acknowledge the diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges of WPS staff, caregivers, and scholars. The product evidence to support this goal was a codified definition of culturally responsive pedagogy, CRP, the embedment of CRP within the WPS instructional framework. within the W P S instructional framework, a C R P empowerment tool, equity-based walkthrough tool, and an equity-based addendum for culturally, linguistically sustaining practices. We are using two K P Is from the strategic plan within this goal. First, K P I one point one is the increase in the percentage of students reporting rigorous and culturally responsive instruction. Over the past year, we have seen growth in both of these areas. K P I one point two, increase the percentage of third, fifth, and eighth grade Hispanic-Latino students, English learners, and students with disabilities that are at or above benchmark, meeting or exceeding in reading and math from the beginning of the school year baseline. We've seen some improvement for Hispanic and Latino and multilingual learners and a slight decrease in, with, in students with disabilities. A focus for this year as part of the vision to action will be a continued focus and improvement for multilingual learners and students with disabilities. The professional practice goal, again, is focused on the strategic plan key priority equitable resources and education programs. This goal is to collaboratively nurture and model a culture in which there is an increase in staff who are reflective about their practice and use disaggregated student data, relevant research, and theory to continuously adapt instruction and improve outcome with intentional focus on historically underserved populations. The product evidence is an improved data literacy self-assessment, a system-wide data literacy protocol for instructional leadership teams, and within the development, a, the development of the principals academy, assistant principals network, deans academy, and coaches academy. This goal used the same K P I measures, um, as the previous goal. Our STAR reading and math assessment data showed us that on average, students were increasing between twenty-nine and thirty-four points in reading and thirty-six and thirty-nine points in math from the beginning of year testing in September through the end of year testing in May and June over the past couple of years. To improve student performance in a meaningful way, we determined how many points the different student subgroups needed to gain year over year through school year twenty twenty-eight to substantially increase the percent of students at appropriate benchmark levels and thus the likelihood that more students would meet or exceed expectations on M C A S because STAR is predictive of M C A S performance. These were the annual targets we set in school year twenty twenty-five and they indicated that we needed a forty-three to fifty-one point gain in reading and forty-seven to fifty-three point gain in math, um, among the various groups to let us know that we were making the kind of growth that would show us we're on a path, uh, to more students meeting grade level expectations. In reading, our M Ls exceeded the annual target. And while the other three groups did not meet their target, they had a thirteen-point gain over the historical average, which is still a substantial gain and indication we are on the right track. For math, we met or exceeded our targets with gains ranging from fifty-one to sixty-one points. The gains for our M Ls were once again, uh, highest among the four groups. We still have a lot of work to do because this is just the first step and this growth does not necessarily guarantee that a significant number of students will now be at benchmark or grade level. But taken as a whole, the change in the average amount of points gained from the beginning to the end of the year are very encouraging and a sign that we'll continue to move in the right direction. Next, I want to give a brief highlight of my entry plan as superintendent. The guiding principles my work is focused on, equity at the center. Every decision must advance equitable outcomes for students. Unified leadership, central office must operate as one team, breaking down silos in service of our schools. Voice and inclusion, stakeholder voice is critical in decision-making, especially educators, students, community members, and families. Vision to action alignment, every department and initiative must connect to the Worcester schools' vision of a learner and transparency. Frequent, honest communication will build trust across the system. Over the past, over the next month, I've begun individual meetings with school committee members to understand their goals and priorities. I've completed one-on-one with all central office and cabinet-level leaders to learn roles, identify strengths, and begin building a unified team culture. I started this week to meet one-on-one with all building principals to learn strengths, needs, and resource gaps of each school. I've laid out a plan to reestablish district leadership meetings to emphasize the need for cross-departmental collaboration, introduce expectation for operating as a single leadership team focused on student success. I plan to visit every school and program in the district during the first month of school, prioritize walk-throughs of classrooms to observe instruction and learning environments, continue regular communication with union leaders to build trust and set a tone for collaboration, and continue to attend community events to engage leaders and, uh, further build community partnerships. In the early fall, I'll continue weekly classroom visits to maintain connection with instructional practice and school climate, attend roundtable discussions for families, community members, and teachers, include representative principals as part of the district leadership meetings to ensure a site-level insight is at the leadership table, facilitate joint working sessions across departments to model collaborative problem solving and focus all work streams on the vision of a learner, attend C P A C, L E I, United Way, and other community organization events to continue deepening community engagement, continue weekly cabinet meetings with a clear focus on student impact, strategic goals, and team building, and launch and improve district communication strategy to communicate insights and build transparency across the district. In early winter, I will present a mid, a cycle review of the progress made on the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six annual goals and include significant findings, themes, and next steps from the entry plan. Identify three to five high-leverage district-wide priorities grounded in data and community input. Hold a mid-year cabinet retreat to formulate a unified leadership culture and define shared accountability measures. Continue with the redesigned district leadership meeting structure to include principal voices and support continuous improvement aligned to the vision of a learner. Set up feedback loops and progress monitoring systems to ensure transparency and responsiveness across all departments. Sorry. We have initiated an ambitious plan to delve deeper in the work that we've begun within the district. We welcome the feedback from the school committee as I prepare the goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Member Mailman?
Thank, thank you. Um, that's an ambitious starting off plan. How many days are even in the month? But, okay. Um, and I, I remember many years ago talking about, you know, school visits and like it's, to get there and it's not about a checkoff, it's about developing those relationships. And I know that's what you're, obviously from the rest of the plan, that's what you're trying to do. So, um, I do have two questions on page fifty. District goal one, which was agenda page fifty. I was curious through the chair and maybe through you, Mr. Allen, or Superintendent, or Dr. Ku, um, if we have the numbers of each of those bodies of staff available to share tonight?
Dr. Q?
So through the chair, can you ask that question one more time?
Do we have, so for the new instructional staff from underrep, for that group, how many people are we talking about?
I do not have that data in front of me. I just have the percentages, but I can certainly get that to you this week.
I'd make a motion that we could get that information. Thank you. For each of the groups that are listed on that, um, on that slide, page fifty. And then my second question is on page fifty-four. The maintenance, the reduction of twelve percent on ensure maintenance and operations cost ratio, can you give us the dollars? What were the dollars the prior year and what were these dollars?
Through the chair, the dollars from twenty-three to twenty-four expenditures were reduced by two point two, three, two point two million. Sorry, I'm still getting used to this mic. Um, we must have had a, which I don't have the information in front of me, but I can provide a report. We must have had some year-end funds for technology because that's where the biggest decline was.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And we could get a report on that as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? So the motion is to approve and file, um, with the two motions from Member Mailman. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
So just, uh, I'm just going to go back a second to N approval of grants and other finances, just for clarity. Although we, we, we were talking a lot about H A S and there was a couple motions in that, I just wanted to be clear that the motion to approve was the motion to approve all the finances and grants that were within that section. It wasn't just about the H A S, H A S thing. So just for clarity and to be clear, we're going to take another roll call on all the grants and finances on this. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
So we go to general business. This was a motion by me, um, to receive a progress report on the D S E special ed audit. Any questions? No? Motion to approve. Those that oppose, no, so audit. So G B five seven four, to review and consider approval of the minute, meeting dates for twenty twenty-six. Any questions? No? Motion to approve. Those that oppose, no, so audit. G B five seven five, Biancaria, request administration provide the student discipline data for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, including all offenses. Member Biancaria?
Thank you. This request is referred to the administration. I certainly appreciate that. And I would hope we could get a timely report, um, back to all of us. And I would like a hot copy of that, uh, please. The reason I'm asking this is I have always been concerned with, um, our programs to keep our kids and our staff safe. And I want to ensure that when we look at these numbers, we are in the right direction of what we are doing to, uh, keep everyone in every building as, as safe as possible, including the fact that a lot of our kids are transported on buses. We want to make sure we have, uh, some of that included in there, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're sending that up. Member Alvarez?
Am I allowed to ask for an amendment to this item?
You could ask for a friendly amendment to, Member Biancaria, if you choose, yes.
Um, I think that providing transparency regarding student discipline data is an excellent way for us to identify trends that occur within our schools. In order to align with our ongoing commitment to ensuring equitable and supportive school practices, I'd like to amend Biancaria's request and ask that in addition to including data on offenses committed by our scholars, that this administration also include some sort of document like a chart or a fact sheet that categorizes or organizes these offenses by district demographics and if possible, if those students are in foster care or living in foster homes. Not only will this help us understand who our vulnerable scholars are, but also identify the disparities in discipline if there are any, and most importantly, give us an opportunity to evaluate our restorative practices.
Thank you. So the motion, uh, Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Um, I certainly can appreciate the information that you would like to add on to that. The issue I have with that is this, I would like to see as soon as possible. With that additional information, I'm sure it'll take a little longer and I didn't want to delay the report. If it's possible, um, that would be a motion in itself versus an amendment. If that is possible.
Sure. So, um, we're, so we have, um, Member Biancaria's item, item that she's asking for a report back in short order. And there's a motion by Member Alvarez. Um, so, um, that would also be sent to administration. All set? Those that oppose, no, so audit. So move on. G B five dash seven six, request administration provide an update on college and career readiness, providing a listing of chapter seventy-four courses and technical courses, including division of Perkins Funds. That is to go to T L S S. Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Um, I asked that I'm informed when this, uh, meeting, I, when this item is then brought forward to, um, the, uh, standing committee because I would like to participate, whether it be by Zoom or in person. Because when we looked at our chapter seventy-four course, of course, is a great example is what we had for a presentation tonight and how involved it can be, what the career is set for our students. And also with funding under Perkins Funds, um, that is something that we use into the chapter seventy-four. It also prepares our students, um, for college and career readiness. And providing a listing helps us promote and advocate what we have to offer for opportunities for our kids, not only in, at Worcester Technical High School. We have branched out and every high school offers opportunities in chapter seventy-four. And that's a part that I, I feel as though we need to advocate every day when we have the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're sending that to T L S S. Those that oppose, no, so audit. G B five seven seven, request administration provide an update on the students in sixth grade from Rice Square traveling to Worcester East Middle for classes to include number of students, transportation, number of staff, and participation in extracurricular activities held at Rice Square. This is Superintendent, uh, Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Um, this is referred to administration. The superintendent and I have discussed this issue. Parents have been informed, everything is running smoothly. I just felt as though it would be nice to have how many kids were actually affected by it, um, if there were any drawbacks, what we have for challenges. And, uh, some of the parents, I know, had questioned the extra activities that would be held at Rice Square School. And with our students being at Worcester East Middle, uh, will they have the capability of going to Rice Square for those activities?
Through the chair, uh, Dr. Tatum will give, can give a brief update tonight, um, to inform the school committee.
Dr. Tatum?
Through the chair, uh, we have about eighty Rice Square students, sixth graders that will be housed at Worcester East Middle. Um, they are considered Worcester East Middle students. So they, they will participate in any after-school activities that Worcester East Middle has to offer.
But not at Rice Square?
But not at Rice Square, correct. Um, that's, that's consistent with what we do at Sullivan Middle School with the Goddard Scholars Program and the sixth graders that attend, uh, Sullivan Middle School as well. Uh, in terms of drawbacks, everything has gone pretty smoothly in terms of our communication with families. We had two meetings with families in the spring. Uh, we were able to bring our grade six students up to Worcester East Middle at the end of the school year to get them acclimated. Principal Duke High and Principal Jackson, I, in my opinion, did a wonderful job of collaborating to make this, uh, work for our, for our scholars.
I am a little disappointed. I know that was one of the topics originally, um, that there were some parents that were concerned with the fact that their students were involved in Rice Square activities. So as a sixth grader, will they be able to then play middle school sports?
Yes. Um, and the, the one family that I, I communicated with, their concern was less about the activities after school, but more about the after-school program. Uh, there's an after-school program at Rice Square. Um, we've contacted that program and they stated they would be able to accommodate that individual and that family if they, uh, if they needed that accommodation.
Excellent. Thank you for making those arrangements. I certainly do appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I, I think this is, um, an interesting way to bring the kids up. We did have a sixth grade level at Worcester East Middle a few years back and it was in specifically for the science lab. So to have this incorporated into the Worcester East Middle, I think will make a difference for our kids. It also, um, over the summer, very happy to say facilities, working with the superintendent over the last year and a half, couple of years, um, the place looks outstanding with the new windows. It really looks fabulous. The outside has such an improvement. It really looks fabulous. The outside has such an improvement over what was there, looking at plywood and so on. So now the students and staff can actually look out the windows. We have some trees in the different areas. The park next door is pretty well kept up to date with not only equipment, but some landscaping there. And we're able to utilize that. So Worcester East Middle didn't have too much love for a while, so right now I think they've gotten some good hugs that they needed. And people have said it's an old school. I don't know if I want my student to go there. Well, it doesn't look like an old school anymore. So if you have any questions, certainly take a ride by. And I wanted to thank the superintendent and our Facilities Department. And I know that they were working diligently to get that completed over the summer, so I certainly appreciate it. Representing District C, that is one of the biggest pieces that we wanted to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Member Benanda?
I was just wondering about, it's such a unique program to have that many students from the sixth grade going there, from that one school. Are there any plans like for looping next year? Like, what is the plan? Because they're, they're different. They'll be in this, they'll be in that school the whole year when the other students come, right? So is there any special plans for that sixth grade for the following year?
Through the Chair, at this time, no. I, I think that's something I will have to assess as the year goes on to see how that will impact faculty, staff, and students at Worcester East Middle.
Thank you. All set? Thank you. So, got an answer, so we could file this? Motion to file. Those that oppose, no so audit. So GB 578, request that the School Committee establish an ongoing review and revision of the Worcester Public Schools Handbook to ensure alignment with current laws, district policies, involving best practices, and provide a structured opportunity for timely updates as needed throughout the year. That's going to file. Those that oppose, no so audit. GB 579, to approve the easement to National Grid, a portion of parcel of land situated on the southern, south, easternly side of Lincoln Street and the easterly side of Tyler Prentice Row. Motion is to approve that. Anyone having questions? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
GB 580, request report from administration if each student, those who receive one, will be obtaining an operable Chromebook for this upcoming school year. Member Roy?
Thank you. I put this on the agenda because there seems to be some questions from parents, guardians, and caretakers that, that they, that they are wondering, do we have enough? Are they in good shape? What happens when they break? And I know we've addressed all this before, and there's a detailed report from Mr. Bob Walton. And it's wonderful. I'm just curious, I did put to file this, but I'm wondering if we could put it in the superintendent's weekly update, just to, to put everybody's minds at ease for parents and that the kids are all gonna be taken care of with the Chromebooks.
Through the Chair, we can either put something in update. Mr. Walton is actually joining us by Zoom. If you want a verbal update, we just give you some information now.
Sure. Sure.
So through the Chair. I wanted to give you an update on this. It's actually kind of exciting what's coming up for this school year. In terms of this, we have assigned Chromebooks. Generally, one-to-one, your question is about one-to-one, but I'll address all grade levels. One-to-one is generally how we assign Chromebooks at the high schools. So a student gets assigned a Chromebook when they begin high school in grade nine, and they keep the same Chromebook until they graduate, when they're supposed to turn the Chromebook in with the charger when they graduate. In terms of the other grade levels, middle school and elementary schools, those Chromebooks are not one-to-one. They generally don't go home unless specifically requested for a teacher. But in general, they stay in school and they're used throughout the day in classrooms. So we met with principals at various levels to discuss Chromebooks and, you know, getting, having enough Chromebooks for students to use. At the high school level, there wasn't much of a concern. You know, once you assign a Chromebook to a student, they generally take reasonable care of it. And, you know, the biggest problem is getting students to make sure they bring them in charged for the day and not losing their charger. But, but didn't seem to be an issue at that level. You know, obviously, they get broken and we repair them, but that wasn't a huge concern there. At the elementary level, again, there's some breakage, but students tend to be pretty good about, you know, taking care of the Chromebooks at that age. The real issue we, we identified was in the middle schools. Just because of the, the sort of the middle school brain, there seems to be generally a much larger breakage rate of Chromebooks. So we identified several areas that needed to be addressed, not just, let's just buy a bunch more Chromebooks, right? Because then you'll just end up with a bunch more broken Chromebooks. We are buying more Chromebooks. And we, out of the, I think there's approximately thirty, four hundred, let's see, eight, eight times four, thirty-two hundred, you know, middle school students, we're dedicating 6,000 Chromebooks to the middle schools. And what we're doing is we've bought brand-new charging carts for those schools. And we're working with the schools to come up with a plan. So we, we've got a couple of things going, right? We've got these Chromebooks. They're gonna have warranties with accidental protection on them. And we're also using a vendor to handle all the repairs, who said there'll be a weak turnaround on the repairs. Terms of the teachers and the principals and the students, we're working to change the culture in those schools, just to bring that damage level down in the schools. So we think that we mainly hear from school committee members and schools and parents about the middle schools and not having enough. So that's where we've put these resources in. So we, we're pretty excited about this school year. We're ramping up. We're populating those carts as we speak. Well, maybe not now as we speak, but, you know, this, this week and next week. So we're looking forward to starting off the school year. It will not only ease those concerns of the middle schools with having Chromebooks for the students that need them during the day, but it will also ease the burden on the rest of the department, because some of these schools have as high as 100% breakage rate in the schools. And that takes a tremendous amount of resources for the whole department to, you know, to ensure that these, you know, Chromebooks are being repaired and gotten back to these schools. So, so that was a long answer to a short question, but I am obviously here to answer any additional questions. And then we have Sarah Curiosus from the Educational Technology Division to answer any educational technology questions.
Thank you very, very much. That was wonderful. And more than I expected, so I'm glad to know all that information now. I do have one last question through the Chair. Are we all set with the budget and funding for, for the Chromebooks for this year, upcoming school year?
Through the Chair, I'll let Mr. Walton answer that.
So in terms of this fiscal year, the, these Chromebooks that we purchased were with last fiscal year's funds. So, you know, we purchased them. We got everything configured this summer with them. So we're ready to go for this summer. Excuse me, this, this school year. In terms of next school year, the plan is to always be starting a brand-new lease of 6,000 Chromebooks. If we don't do that, we're gonna end up in a, in a spot where we have, you know, six, seven, eight-year-old Chromebooks that just don't work. So I will be back at budget time and we'll be asking for another, adding another lease and doing that continually until we get up to the, the full amount of Chromebooks that we need for all grade levels. And then it will just be a continuous five-year cycle of those leases, starting new ones as the five years comes up from the ones we're getting now.
Well, I want to thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it. And I have no further questions.
Thank you. So motion to file. Those that oppose, no so audit. GB 581, to coordinate with the Worcester City Clean City Initiative in order to educate our students, staff, and families. Also to encourage additional education involvement through our civics programs, projects, on ways we can work together to keep Worcester clean. Member McCullough?
As it reads.
So that will go to administration. Those that oppose, no so audit. GB 582, request the Worcester Public Schools change its current cellphone policy to align with the new proposed bell-to-bell cellphone policy voted on by the Mass Senate, currently in the Mass House, and recommend by, and recommended by the governor, and implement the new policy for all Worcester Public Schools for the 2025, 2026 school year. Member Benanda?
As it reads. Just wanted to add that as of this morning. It's still in the House. It hasn't come out of the House. And, but once it, if it does get voted in, the governor has said that she is going to approve it. The reason I added this is that what I hear most from staff and schools is they are still concerned about the cellphones in the classroom. And they're looking forward to this bill being passed. So if it had been passed prior to school starting, I was hoping that Worcester would be the leader and start out with following the law. Because if it gets passed, we do have to follow it. Happy now to send it to FOG and see what happens then. Also, it would follow up on the past item that we agreed on tonight about updating the policies through the year. Thank you.
Thank you. So that will go to FOG?
Yes.
I guess this is a little weird. I don't know if... Member Mailman?
I respect where the question, where the item is coming from, but I, I, I'm not sure what's gonna happen in the House, and I'm not sure. I'm hearing this is not gonna be a fast item. And I think we have a lot of work that gets done in FOG through the Chair to the Superintendent. And I don't want, this item is a very hot, exciting item. And I would rather we hold on this item until the law actually, if it is going to get passed, does get passed. Because I hear that the House is, this is not a fast-moving item on the House side. Thank you.
So what are you asking? That when it goes to FOG, it, what?
I would hold this until the law is passed. I, a motion to file. Motion to file this. Thank you. Until it comes up, until the law actually gets passed.
Okay. Anyone else? No? So...
Through the Chair, I, I thought if you filed it, it couldn't be brought up for a certain amount of time.
I think it's three months. Am I correct?
So I'll, I'll hold on my motion then. Thank you.
No problem. So the motion is to file this item. Roll call.
I'm not sure if they'd be able to get clarification from the clerk on this item through the Chair. Even though that is the case with a member filing the item again, because we now have the open item for evaluating policies as they come along. And if this does become a law that we have to adjust, would we be able to take that up sooner than that 90 days? Because it's not the member or a member filing the item. It's actually a policy that we have to evaluate because of a law through the Chair. And I know this is a little complex, but I'm just trying to think. I think that would be a possibility. So if there is a law that we have to abide by, that it doesn't tie us up to that 90 days, because it would be applicable to the other item. Not sure if you know that answer. I know that's kind of putting you on the spot. That's a very complex thing. But I do think that it would be a separate item, because it's not somebody filing the item again or bringing the item up again. If it's a law, we have to follow it and follow the policy. So that would be, that would be my interpretation, I guess, is where I'm coming from, but I could be incorrect.
We'll have to get an answer back on that, but for, for now, I don't think we have a clear answer on that. Member Mailman? Member Mailman?
Clarifying, clarifying that, okay. Some of my colleagues are thinking, just hold it for, until, for clarification, until the next meeting. But I guess my thought is even if we file it for 90 days, doesn't, and the law passes in 30 days, that doesn't mean, I don't think that means you have to wait for the 90 days, if that's what my colleague was suggesting.
Through the Chair, yes, but I, I don't want to keep going on with this. Probably holding it for clarification for the next meeting is the best way. That's just my opinion.
That's fine.
So the motion is, she, she took away the motion to file. The motion is to hold this, to get clarification from the clerk at the next meeting on whether or not our new policy on updating the handbook would supersede whether or not this was filed or not anyway. So that's the motion. Motion, the first motion is to hold. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
GB 583, request administration provide an update on preppy kindergarten program. Member Mailman?
As it reads.
That's going to TLSS. Those that oppose, no so audit. GB 584, review subcommittee structure, roles and responsibilities for any changes and updates prior to the new school committee swearing-in. Member Mailman?
As it reads.
That is to go to FOG. Those that oppose, no so audit. GB 585, request school committee review the process of items accepted on the school committee agenda that will be determined and discussed, that have been brought to our attention by our constituents. Member Biancaria?
I ask that the recommendation to administration be null, and we have the recommendation referred to FOG.
So you want this to go to FOG?
Correct.
Okay, so that will go to FOG. I, I think the question is, I believe we thought there was a item pending in FOG in regards to something like this. If it is, we're just add it to that. I'm just not sure if it's the, but I thought there might be something in FOG. Or Member McCullough believed there may be something in FOG that is kind of similar to this, that we could just take together. Am I correct?
Through the Chair, I, there was previously an item that was in FOG to re, to evaluate our rules and things of that nature. I'm not sure that I can put my finger on that item at the moment, if it did get filed or if it was still pending. My only thought was, if it is still pending, that Member Biancaria's item be taken with that. Either way, I'm fine with the recommendation of it going to FOG, because it's under purview and not administrations.
Yeah, we always take up our rules anyway, every year, so we'll be having that discussion anyway. So that will go to FOG? Those, anything else?
That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Thanks.
All set? Member Mailman?
Could I just ask for a little bit more clarification on what, what this means through the Chair?
Guess if she, I, I guess she's asking you. I, I don't... If, if Member Biancaria chooses to answer, she, I don't know.
You have an item. You send it in. Gets reviewed by Vice Chair, our Superintendent, if there are any suggestions. And those items come from constituents. Those are the people that we represent in the city of Worcester, different districts. And we do have two people that are on the school committee that are at large, so they cover the whole city. The rest of us are under district, so when a constituent in my district requests something and is looking for information and would like to be discussed, the item is then brought to the agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Thank you. So for, to clarify, the rules of the school committee is that the vice chair, along with the clerk and the superintendent, sit and set the agenda. Part of the rule is, and the reason why we came up with this rule was based on the audit, I believe that was done in 2018, that came out and said that members on the school committee at the time were flooding the administration with items that were not within the school committee's purview. So we then created that rule, that the vice chair will sit with the superintendent and ensure that items that come before us are within our purview, that should be submitted to the school committee, and the vice chair has that authority, is not the superintendent, because it's our, our agenda, along with the clerk, following the rules, we make a determination. That's, that's the rule. In regards to the constituents, and I think we had talked about this before, is there are some emails or phone calls that we may get that may not require an item with the report back, that could be clarified by a phone call to administration or whoever's in charge of that area to get that answer done or whatever. So we do, at times, make a determination that whether or not this could have been clarified based on a phone call, where we could answer our constituents at the time. For an example, we just had a recent situation, constituent reached out to me in regard to some transportation issue. I reached out to the superintendent. We handled that situation. They responded to the constituent individually themselves, got clarified, there was no item needed at that time. So those are the discussions that are done, and that's based on a rule that we came up with, based on the audit that happened in 2018. But we can have further discussion when we discuss our rules coming up for next school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we were sitting at the FOG. Those that oppose, no so ordered. GB 586, request an update on the current status of our school liaison officer partnership with the Worcester Police Department, specifically in understanding if and how the program is being implemented in the Worcester Public Schools, and what strategies are in place to ensure that it is being used as a tool to build positive and trusting relationships between our students and their families and our police officers. Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of this request is straightforward. I'm seeking a clear update on the current status of the SLO program, specifically, I'd like to understand if and how the program is presently being implemented in our schools, and what strategies are being used to ensure that it serves as a genuine bridge, building positive, respectful, and trusting relationships between our students, families, and police officers. For many students, a school liaison officer may be the first and most consistent interaction they have with law enforcement. The nature of those interactions can have a profound effect on how they view public safety, authority, and the role of our community, in our community. This is why it's essential that this program is not solely seen as a security measure, but as an opportunity for mentorship, dialogue, and partnership. Our SLOs should be approached, be approached as role models, people our students feel comfortable turning for guidance, support, and connection. Thank you.
Member Biancaria?
Thank you. I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we add in, that we also received the new MOU signed by the new superintendent and our president chief of police, please.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. So we were sitting at the TLSS with the friendly amendment. Those that oppose, no so ordered. GB 587, request that administration explore the opportunities, opportunity to implement an Army JR OTC program at one of the Worcester Public Schools, high schools. Member Guardiola?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. As we know, we have currently, we have two different junior ROTC programs, one Air Force, the other Army. I'd like to ask to explore, excuse me, not Army, Navy and Air Force currently. I'd like to explore the Army Junior ROTC. It's more than a leadership program, it's a character-building program. Students who participate in junior ROTC learn essential life skills, discipline, teamwork, time management, and personal responsibility. These are qualities that set them apart, not only in the classroom, but also in their future careers, whether they choose college, military, or the workforce. You know, there's, they show, they often show improvement in attendance, higher graduation rates, greater academic engagement, and many go on to earn scholarships, both in military and civilian, because of the leadership and service experience they gain. It also opens up pathways into careers in public service, law enforcement, emergency management, engineering, and other high-end fields. Even those who have never entered the military, the program provides a network of mentors, role models, and opportunities that last a lifetime. For school districts, junior ROTC is a cost-effective way to expand educational offering. The U.S. Army provides instructors, uniforms, equipment, significantly reducing the cost burden on local schools. The program also increases student engagement, reducing dropout rates, improving overall school climate, and cadets frequently volunteer in our community, representing, you know, the schools in parades and civic events. They foster a sense of pride that radiates through the student body. It's really not about recruiting for the military, it's about recruiting for life. It's about, you know, producing graduates who are confident, capable, and community-minded. It's an investment into our young people that pays dividends for decades to come. So I would urge that we really look into this and hopefully get some feedback, so we can give these opportunities to other students who may not want to be into either the Navy or the Air Force. Thank you.
Thank you. We're sending that to administration. Those that oppose, no so, oh, I'm sorry. Member Benanda?
Through the chair, could I add a friendly amendment to that program? Having been at South High Community School for the 38 years I was there, and having the JR ROTC program, well over 100 students were involved in that program, it made a difference really in the lives of all those children. I believe it's the only JR ROTC program we currently have left in the Worcester Public Schools. So I'm wondering if we could, if you'd be okay with the amendment to also re-explore opening the JR ROTC programs in the high schools that used to have them and no longer does.
That's fine.
Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Some of us have attended for several years the Memorial Day services and the veteran services that occur in our city, and the celebrations and also the recognitions. And it's a proud moment when our students are there and able to participate. And North High's program has fallen short. And unfortunately, over the last couple of years, it did not have a teacher. The, I spoke with the veteran president at the time in the city, and he had a couple of appointments with our former superintendent. And I would stand here encouraging our new superintendent to sit down and have a meeting, because everything Mr. Guardiola said is so true, including the pride that is not only from the students, they're from their siblings, their parents. It is quite an honor to have our kids participate in some of the programs that this program has enabled them to become and be part of. So I certainly encourage not only all of our high schools, but I certainly advocate for North High School to gain that program again, and it really made a difference in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will send that to administration with the motion, with, remember Benanda's motion as well. Those that oppose, no so ordered. To GB 588, to review and approve the administrator injuries from student encounters. So the motion is to approve and file. Those that oppose, no so ordered. Well, actually, I want to take a roll call on that, please. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
And that's it for tonight. You guys enjoy. Motion to adjourn.